Welcome to the Douglas County Board of County Commissioners meeting for Wednesday, April 15. Just a few notes as we get started. We were pretty excited about our successful Zoom meeting last week, thanks to all that made that happen, and we hope for the same this week. However, we do ask that you be patient with us as we work through some of these technology challenges. A few reminders about how we're going to run our meeting in this time of stay-at-home and social distance. First, if visual aids are used during the meeting, the presenter will share the screen with the call. Participants will not be able to view them without a computer, smartphone, or tablets. All participants will be entered into the meeting with their audio muted, meaning the commission and the public will not be able to hear you. Presenters will be unmuted when their agenda item comes up, and we ask that all online presenters use good conference call etiquette and mute their line when not speaking. Also, please introduce yourself each time you speak. If you have a public comment on the agenda item or have a public comment during our regular public comment section, we please ask that you use the raise your hand function on Zoom. Staff will call on you and unmute you. We ask that speakers give their name and address for the minutes. The county does reserve the right to shut off the microphone and remove any speaker from the meeting if they are vulgar, rude, or inappropriate. The chat function has been disabled, and a recording of this meeting will be available on our website after the meeting. With that, I want to welcome everybody and start with our consent agenda. We have four items on our consent agenda. Thank you for scrolling that down, Sarah. I have a mo—does any member of the commission have an item that they'd like to remove off the consent agenda?
No. No.
Does any member of the public have an item that they would like removed off the consent agenda? Sarah and Jill are the ones who let us know if there is and there's not. All right, I would entertain a motion for consent agenda items one, two, three, and four.
Move to approve.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
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 All right, we'll move now to our regular agenda. Our first item is item 2.1, which is the Neighborhood Revitalization Area, or NRA, to construct a mixed-use project at approximately 800 Pennsylvania Street.
Good evening, county commissioners. This is Britt Crumpano. I'm the City Economic Development Administrator, and Jill, I think, is helping me share my PowerPoint. I'm going to make a brief presentation. We do have the applicant and the applicant's representative here. I believe Diane Stoddard is also on the line, so after the presentation, we can open it up for questions if you'd like some additional information. But basically, I'm just going to quickly go over what the project is, the request, the analysis, the considerations, recommendations, and then requested action and next steps. I do want to point out that this PowerPoint I've used at three meetings now, the school board district meeting on Monday, as well as the city commission meeting last night, some of these items on the request will not be of interest or consideration to the county, and I'll let you know which ones those are. So basically, it's everything except for the NRA or Neighborhood Revitalization Area is not a request of the county. So next, please. Next, oh, thank you. So this is a mixed-use project. It's located in the East Lawrence Warehouse Arts District. First floor, it will be a combination of commercial retail office, also some live-work units, which are kind of a unique concept, which the applicant can give you some more information on. Floors two through four are residential and a mix of different studio, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedroom, and then both onsite and offsite parking. Next, please. The residential on floors two through four are affordable housing. This project is participating in the Low Income Housing Tax Credit or LIHTC program. This is a federal program specifically to help advance affordable housing, and altogether there will be 47 affordable rental units. Next, please. So the request is for a 15-year 95% Neighborhood Revitalization Area. Again, the additional requests were of the city, so I'm not going to go over any of those. Next, please. So just as a recap, the Neighborhood Revitalization Area is a property tax rebate program, and it applies only to the incremental increase in value due to the project. So the base property is shielded from the rebate. The base property is what the property was bringing in before improvements. This project will be built on three parcels, and the last tax statement for the three parcels, altogether, they were bringing in about $2,200 a year. So the tax and jurisdictions still get that base property tax, and then any increment, whatever percentage of increment is not awarded, they would also get. So here's just a visual of how—thank you. Here's a visual of kind of how it all works, and these were estimated numbers for the 800 Pennsylvania Street project. The blue down at the bottom is the small base that the property is currently bringing in. The red indicates the amount that the tax and jurisdictions will receive, both during the rebate period and after. I did want to point out, I only went out 20 years, but real estate has a much longer life, of course, than that, so the long-term return is—is will be much more substantial if you looked at the real, true life of the property. The green section represents the rebate that the property owner receives to help them with this affordable housing project. Next, next, please.
I'm sorry, Mike, it's—it's not going—it's going slowly, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Is that right?
Yeah, you can skip this one, this also is not for the county, so you can go on. You can skip this screen as well. I did want to talk a little bit about the benefit-cost analysis or cost-benefit analysis. I ran this two separate ways. The—the request package is also asking for some funds from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and that is not part of our economic development tools. So the first scenario shows how I would normally run the analysis, and as you can see there, the ratios—the benefit-cost ratios are all above the 1.25 threshold that the city prefers to see. And then, of course, down below, if you add in those affordable housing funds that the city would provide in the form of a grant, you can see the impact it has on the city ratio. National Development Council is our third-party financial consultant when it comes to economic development projects. They did initial analysis and underwriting. They came to the conclusion that the project definitely needs all of what is requested in order to make it viable. That is often case—often the case with affordable housing projects, it does take a lot of capital stacking of different resources to make it all come together. Next, please. Additional considerations: it meets the community's goal to increase affordable housing. It converts vacant parcels to productive use. It promotes the density and vibrancy within the East Lawrence Historic Warehouse District, and it supports infill development. Next, please. So staff feels that this project meets everything that is required for the NRA, as well as the other items that they were requesting. Again, the benefit-cost ratio threshold is a—is above 1.25 for all the tax and jurisdictions. The Affordable Housing Grant, when you throw that in there, it isn't, but that's partly because the—the model is not capturing intangible benefits from those funds of bringing affordable housing to the community. Next, please. So Perk reviewed this at their February 6 meeting, and they voted four to one to recommend the approval of a 15-year 95% NRA, and they also approved the rest of the request. Next, please. And although you guys aren't necessarily concerned with the Affordable Housing Grant funds, they also voted to recommend the package. So for the city last night, they—their action was to adopt on first reading the NRA ordinance, 9738, and—and they did—as well as they did—they did actually approve the rest of the package with the exception of the city fees. Next, please. So the school board considered this on Monday, last—this past Monday, and they voted six to one to participate in the 15-year 95% NRA. The city commission met last night and considered it on first reading, and they voted four to one to approve the 15-year 95% NRA. So it's now before you, the county commission, it will go back to the city commission on second reading, and that is tentatively scheduled for next Tuesday, the 21st. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Britt, appreciate that. Any questions for Britt while she's here? Okay.
None from me. I don't have any. Thank you, Britt.
Thank you.
And Patrick, I'm not seeing any on the panel, or on the attendees, any questions either?
Okay, probably hear from the applicant here. I guess that would be the right thing to do. I see Tony's here.
Hey, guys.
That's Patrick.
Yeah.
Hi, Commissioner. Thank you for—for taking the time this evening. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have. If you wanted another overview, I'm happy to do that as well. I think Britt did a great job, but let me—let me know if you need anything from me.
Appreciate that. I'm fairly familiar with this project, having seen it at the Affordable Housing Advisory Board and at Perk, so just check with my other two commissioners, see if they have any questions before we open it up for any public comment.
I don't have any questions, Patrick.
Thanks.
This is Nancy. I—I don't have any—any questions. I—I read the packet pretty carefully and have some background on the Affordable Housing Advisory Board. I have—it's kind of a side question, but there was one correspondence, Tony, from a fellow named John Thorberg, who asked specifically about how you're going to take into consideration those folks with bikes and inside parking for bikes and all of that. I know that this is outside of the—of the tonight's decision, but had you received that correspondence or that request for attention to that?
I can't—I can't say that I have. I—I still have the bad habit of reading the comments section in the newspaper, so I—I saw some—some comments today, but none about bikes. I—I might—I might—I might make mention, Commissioner Thelman, that we did that at the Polar Lofts that we have indoor as well as—is outdoor bike racks. This might have changed, but I don't—I'm not sure if the indoor bike racks were used as much as the outdoor, maybe in that situation because you had to go down a flight of stairs or down the elevator. But—but I—I will say, as somebody that likes to bike myself, it would be nice. On the other hand, it does take up quite a bit of valuable square footage, and from an amenities point, we—we've already made our commitments to the state and to the city, so I—I—I never want to tell anybody no, but in reality, I'm not sure how much physical space we might have to—to do something like that.
Okay, well, I appreciate your thoughts on that. I might just, since you haven't seen, I might just send that correspondence along to you so you can be aware of it at least and—and keep it in mind. And I apologize, I know that's kind of outside of our real decision tonight, but thought you would want to know about that one.
Yeah, one thing that we're taking a look at doing, and—and this is at our office building in Prairie Village, but there's a—there's not only a bike rack system, but there's also a little toolkit attached to it, and might—maybe even an air pump attached to it. So that's something that we had already been thinking about doing on the north side of the building, so long that we can get permitting to do so, and that would not only be an amenity for our tenants at Penn Street Lofts, but also an amenity for the Warehouse Arts District and East Lawrence, in addition to just our tenants, which is why we wanted it to be on the north side so that it was accessible and that people saw it and knew about it, that they didn't, you know, have to know that it's, you know, behind the building where most people wouldn't—wouldn't find it visible, so.
Right, right, okay. Good to know, thank you. Otherwise, I'm—I don't have any questions.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Thelman. This is a public agenda item, so we'll open it up to see if—well, all of our agenda items are public, but this is a regular business item, so we'll open it up for public comment this time. Sarah or Jill?
Not seeing anything.
Okay, not hearing from Sarah, so I'm going to assume we don't have anybody at the county commission building right now wanting to give public comment on this.
There's no public comment, sorry about that.
Thank you. So bring it back up to the commission for conversation, motions, and a vote. And I—I guess I'll just start. I—I am excited about this project. I think, you know, Britt said that we—we don't—we do follow very closely our affordable housing goals and really care a whole lot about them, and I think we want to provide more affordable housing in the county, and so that was something that checked the box for me. Also, the benefit analysis, this is really—it's what you want on these types of projects in my mind. You—you know, there could be the argument made that that neighborhood is very well-developed already. I—I think this really kind of completes the puzzle for us over there. I really appreciate all the work Tony has done to bring in the outside funding to leverage on this project, and—and I'm—I'm excited to support it.
So this is—this is Nancy, and I—I—I would echo Patrick's thoughts. I think our—our new comprehensive plan calls for infill development, especially around downtown, and equitable treatment for folks, and this provides a way for folks with low income and the need for affordable housing still to live very near a very desirable part of town. The neighborhood plan calls for medium-dense residential in that—on that particular corner, so this fits, and in terms of the—the—the numbers, to have over $8 million leveraged, about outside money for this purpose, and relatively small ask of—for city dollars, and certainly the promise of real return on the dollar in terms of tax revenue at the end of the abatement is—it's really—it's a strong project, and I—I think it's something that actually, in the midst of the situation we're in with the COVID-19 and the potential for fewer projects coming our way, I think that we—you know, I think this is a good project to—to go with now while we can, with that many millions of dollars leveraged in our favor and a real need for affordable units, and a developer who's willing to be committed to affordable housing. I think it's a win-win, and I appreciate the opportunity to—to support it.
And without repeating everything that my fellow commissioners said, I—I too—I mean, there's just so many benefits and pluses to this project, you know? We all know that there's a need, so I'm very supportive of it.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and make the motion, if it's all right with my fellow commissioners, to receive the recommendation from the Public Consent of Advisory Committee and consider county participation in a 15-year 95% Neighborhood Revitalization Area NRA for 2014 to construct a mixed-use project at approximately 800 Pennsylvania Street.
Second.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
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 All right, thank you, Tony. Thank you, Patrick. Appreciate it. Thank you, Britt.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to our second item is for bids for—for the courthouse and jail-e parking lot repairs, and we got a little bit of a preview of this last week, if you were tuning into our meeting then. And David Sparks, is David here?
Actually, Commissioner Kelly, this is Sarah Plinsky. Dave—Dave's had a hard time getting in on the Zoom call, so I said I would help cover this item for him. I think Keith Browning is available as well, and have some specific questions on the bids. I would say that this is a project that we have had a part of our special building plan for a number of years. It has been a project that we've sort of struggled with because it would mean closing down our parking lots, which, as—as most folks know, are very busy during normal times and full of employees and visitors to both the courthouse and the judicial and law enforcement center. Maintenance and public work staff felt like this was an excellent opportunity to—to—to jump on an opportunity, go ahead and get this project completed. The bids were sent to you, I think Dave is on now, if you have questions for him, and we—the funds are budgeted in the special building fund to complete this project.
Any questions for Dave or for Sarah?
I don't have any questions.
I don't either.
Okay, so this is a—a regular agenda item, and we open those up for public comment. Is there any public comments, Sarah or Jill?
There's no public comment here.
Okay.
No, I don't see any, sorry.
Okay, thanks, Jill. All right, so if there's no public comment, commissioners, motions, or comments?
I think, Patrick, didn't we—we have Dave's recommendation for a specific company now, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Kilo.
I believe.
I'm just having trouble getting to numbers, but I would—I'd be happy to try and make the motion to award a construction contract for repairs to the courthouse and jail-e parking lots and to North Street for the bid submitted by Kilo.
And I think the bid amount—if I can amend your motion, Commissioner Thelman, is 149,73664, is that correct, Dave?
I can try to get to the item.
Okay.
Okay, that would be my motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you, Dave. I'm glad you got on finally to put in your two cents word. Appreciate that. Okay, on to the next item, which is for the creation of Douglas County Consolidated Fire District Number One, merging fire districts one, four, and six.
All right. Commissioners, I will kick this off and then turn it over to Kami Owens, who I believe is—yeah, is on the call. Just as—you know, we talked about this last week, that this—that this resolution was going to be on our agenda this week to begin the process, and really, this is the beginning of—of this—of the second step to consolidate the existing districts together. So I'll turn it over to Kami to give any just sort of high-level comments, and then I'll—available for any questions the commissioners might have.
Thanks, Sarah.
Good evening, this is Kami Owens, Douglas County Budget Manager. We are presenting the resolution for the beginning of the second phase of our fire districts that we have been working on for the past—it looks like since March. This is just to create the merger. The next step would be that there would be final action after there's been time for a protest petition—to allow for a protest petition on June 24th. So this is just the beginning, and to put publications out there that this is our intention to merge all three of these. I will tell you that originally, we had thought that we were going to keep the number six and make this fire district number six, since that was created, fire district, but Douglas County currently has fire districts two and three, and it seems kind of odd to not have one, two, and three. So we discussed it amongst all the members and the legal counsel, and for clarification, we want to call it Consolidated Fire District Number One, and then we will have fire districts number one, two, and three in Douglas County.
Thanks, Kami, and I just want to add a couple other things. You know, this is—we had a work session, I believe, on this topic on early in March, where we talked about a number of the benefits of this—this plan, and, you know, really, it's about efficiency and service provision, and making sure that residents of the unincorporated area continue to be protected and have access to these important lifesaving services. Kami and I have been having ongoing conversations with Chief Baxter about the project and—and—and preparing the budget, so I do believe that we—we will bring back before you as a part of our budget process what our intention is for the budget for this district. And I've seen some preliminary information on the budget, and we do believe that we can create a budget inside the—what we announced upfront as the anticipated levy of 5.5 mils. Commissioners know from last week, we have received letters of support from each of the townships and districts for this process. So at this point in time, you know, while we are going through the process to formally consolidate everyone together, we will continue to be working really hard behind the scenes to—to pull everything together to create the process. And to that end, I will be working closely with Chief Baxter to create the transition team and establish his leadership over the district, as well as then formally putting together the transition team that's been working really informally at this point in time to—on questions and—and. time to, on questions and, you know, other things concerning what we need to do to create the district there. Like, like we said on March 4th, there are thousands of little details on this when, as you pull groups together that have been working separately. So I'll be in communication with the commission as we get that group together and if concerns are brought forward for us to proceed with this project. But again, I would like to just thank the townships and the fire districts for their desire to do this, make this important step, and really look towards the future of fire service in Douglas County. Do you all have any questions for me?
I do not.
I don't.
I don't, I think we heard a lot about this at our study session quite, it seems like a long time ago now. It really wasn't that long ago, but boy, it seems like a long time ago now. And I, I would just say I appreciate some of the members of the public who brought up some questions, and I think they're fair questions to ask, but, you know, we're, we're early on in this process and, and want to give it time and give the public time to sort of work this, work this through. So let's see if there are any, oh, we do have Mike Baxter. Mike, do you have any comments you wanted to make?
Sorry, Commissioner, I was trying to get off you. Yeah, this is Mike Baxter with Walker's Township Fire Department. And no, I, I do not have any comments that I would like to add to what the county administrator and Kami have said. So I just thank you guys for your support and working with us through this. I think it's a, a huge step for the efficiency in the safety of not only the firefighters, but the efficiency of services given to the, the community that we serve. So thank you for that support.
Thank you, Mike. We have members of the public, is anyone wanting to provide public comment on this item?
I don't see anything.
I have no public comment here.
Okay, just remember, folks, if you want to make public comment, raise your hand and it gets you moved right in there. Okay, so with no public comment, any motions?
I can make a motion, I can try. So I would move to approve a resolution to form Douglas County Consolidated Fire District Number One.
Second?
Moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Excellent, thank you very much. Thank you, Kami.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Baxter. Thank you, Sarah. And the last item on our regular agenda is a request to provide funding for school-age feeding program with Lawrence Restaurants. I believe Jill, you're our person on this one.
Yes, commissioners, this request emerged with a recommendation first from the Unified Command Response Group, which is the, so it came before Sarah, Craig Owens with the City of Lawrence, Dan Partridge with the Lawrence Douglas County Housing Authority, and Russ Johnson from LMH Hospital. And the request came out of, as in my role, along with Derek Rogers from the City of Lawrence, we're, we're the co-conveners of the Housing and Human Services Branch of the Unified Command Structure. So as I think you all know, we've been convening three different workgroups over the past three weeks, four weeks. I'm losing track of time. One of those workgroups is related to food distribution and feeding operations. So as we've convened a very large group of stakeholders under the leadership in that subgroup of Elizabeth Keever of Just Food, we've been having what we, we believe to be just an ongoing conversation, monitoring the needs, the community feeding needs and operations, to make sure that we're getting those folks the resources they need, that we're sustaining operations at the level that they need and all that. Excuse me, sorry. So this need came out, came up fairly recently as a result of a conversation, a decision that was made by the Lawrence School District to cease their feeding operations, their school breakfast and lunch operations for beginning this week through May 1st. And that was a response to what they believed to be were some challenges they had with the staff that was administering their programs at the different school sites. So then an opportunity arose with the members of the Lawrence Restaurant Association under the leadership of Emily, I am forgetting Emily's name right now, but Emily with Merchants, yeah, Emily, I apologize, Emily Peterson with Merchants Public Plate and, and her role on behalf of the Lawrence Restaurant Association to organize efforts of interested restaurants to contribute their time and talents that could, to, could, to fill that gap of what they thought was an important, an important resource that was being provided to the children and of the Lawrence School District, especially when we heard numbers along the lines of, on a daily basis, 2,600 meals were being distributed. So that includes breakfast and lunch at all four sites. And that, in the minds of folks that were a part of that conversation, seemed like a compelling need and something that needed to be supported and sustained, given the, just the, the overall state of things. So the request that is before you has been facilitated also by efforts by the Lawrence Chamber and just so many, so much time and energy by Hugh Carter, combined with the Lawrence Education Foundation, who's going to act as the fiscal agent for this request. And they will, once they receive a portion, the portion of this gap funding that's been requested of the city and the county, that 87,000, they will facilitate the payment of invoices for the contributing restaurants so that they can quickly continue to meet this need and also, while also adhering to the USDA, USD 497 guidelines for the very strict parameters about what can and can't be served and the nutrition guidelines and all in hopes of getting a reimbursement on the expenses to the fullest amount. That being said, the gap of funding that could not, that would not be reimbursable to accommodate the needs of the restaurants and make it so they're not doing this at a loss, that's the request that's before you all today. The Lawrence Education Foundation has believed, or has already indicated that they will be able to offset that amount by $25,000, and I believe that they have already applied for an additional $25,000 grant through the Kansas Health Foundation. And then we recently learned today that there will be FEMA funding available to help offset these expenses even further, with the goal being that this $87,000 total amount, or the half that will be the city's, or the city's contribution and the half of that 87, that will be the county's contribution, that that will shrink considerably if get down to zero, based on those FEMA dollars that are applied and any dollars that the Lawrence Education Foundation is able to garner to offset that expense. So that was kind of a long-winded, and today was the first day of doing it, and it went really well, really well. And I'm happy to answer any questions and apologize for all the rambling.
Hey, Jill, this is Nancy. I don't have any questions, and I actually needed all of that rambling because now it makes a lot more sense to me, kind of, yeah, thank you, where bits and pieces of the money will come from in terms of making the city and the county whole, if possible, in the end. I think besides the fact that this is a way to feed our kids in Douglas County, I think it's, I guess, in Lawrence, it's also a way to keep our, some of our restaurants busy doing what they love to do and keeping, helping them keep their employees working. So I'm, I'm glad for that as well and super grateful to Emily Peterson, always for her leadership in, in these kind of thoughtful, much-needed and thoughtful additions to all of the work that everyone's doing, so.
Thank you for mentioning that, Nancy. That's one of the things I was going to add to Jill's comments is that, really, this is a program that has two benefits for us, in addition to over 1,300 kids continuing to get food on a daily basis. The Lawrence Restaurant Association, this is really a little stimulus package for them in terms of being able to financially support them during this time. So it's going to provide a little stimulus to them as well. And so there's, it's got two benefits in that regard. Like Jill said, we, we fully, in addition to the sources of funds she listed, we also believe that perhaps the city's either CDBG or ESG funds would be able to be used to offset this, but that guidance just isn't out just yet. And, and most of those programs are reimbursements anyway. So we would, we need to proceed with the program and we need to proceed with incurring the expenses as a community in hopes that we are fully reimbursed. And then I would add that this is a program that we really envision happening for a short period of time and that over the, by May 1st, so over the next few weeks, Jill and her leadership with the team of Liz Keever and others will continue to work to begin to plan what will happen after May 1st, how the district can be engaged in that work, how we can, how we can kind of try to get back to a better reimbursement model rate and how we can work with our community, you know, organizations, restaurants, and feeding partners to continue to feed folks throughout this event.
Yeah, and I'll just offer that, you know, we, we continue to monitor the needs of, you know, I feel like Liz Keever and Just Food are, they're kind of the hub of so many wheels of food distribution and food supports in the community. They're doing so many things, supporting all the little food pantries and, and even, you know, the Trinity, the lunch operations, things like that. So Liz and I are in pretty regular contact with one another, and I feel like she knows when it's time to elevate any concerns that she has on her end, but she's just been a complete soldier in all this, and we feel fairly confident about where we are today, especially with this supplemental support.
Jill, can you just say for me again, you mentioned $25,000 in there, is that coming from the Schools Foundation, is that what you said?
The Schools Foundation indicated out of their ICAN fund, I believe, that they, that's where some, their initial commitment of $25,000 would come from to offset this amount. And then they, Dina Johnston from the foundation had, as of yesterday, submitted a Kansas Health Foundation grant that were recently released for 20, another $25,000. So at, at this point, it sounds like at least $50,000 will be accounted for by the foundation based on their efforts. And I know she's looking at some additional grant funding efforts as well. And, and then Sarah mentioned the CDBG money and the FEMA dollars that we believe will further help us offset this expense.
And the, and the public could donate to that ICAN fund as well, is that all right?
Absolutely, yeah. I don't have a ready-to-go link for that right now, but we can certainly get it out there and promote it. If the schools not, if the foundation's not already doing it, I can work with Carrie to make sure that we're promoting that on our social media just as much.
Yeah, just, you know, kudos to so many people on this. I mean, it's just so great to see so many people coming together. You mentioned Hugh Carter and Dina Johnston, because it doesn't sound like we're having to do any of the administrative work really on this. We're just providing a, a financial backstop, so to say. And it sounds like you're, you're sort of saying, you know, some of that's being taken care of or been committed already, is that correct?
It has, yeah. We're just going, we're helping to front-load the efforts so that it's a real seamless, quick process for the restaurants to get the financial resources they need to, to do this and, and pay, and keep paying their bills and keep providing 150 meals each day. That's the commitment that each restaurant is doing right now and paying for things like the paper sacks and things like that. And I did want to mention that Hy-Vee is providing all of the milk at cost to finish off the requirements, those USDA requirements as well. They were, they've been, they were a great partner in this as well.
Patrick, I guess the only thing I'd interrupt there to add to what Jill's comments are is that actually Jill has done a tremendous amount of heavy lifting on this program. She was in it from the beginning to be responsive as a part of our branch lead for Housing and Human Services and immediately jumped into conversations with Hugh and other folks involved in this effort. And I know she worked over the weekend, I know she was there today helping to deliver meals. And so I would say that the county's investment on her part is pretty, I'm very grateful for it.
Thanks, Sarah.
Thank you, Jill.
Yeah, my pleasure, my pleasure.
And, you know, I'd really encourage the public, and they're looking for volunteers, and those volunteers are being managed by the United Way. I was fortunate enough to volunteer when we were doing it as a school district, and I, I will tell you, it's very rewarding. These families are really needing that food insecurity and being able to, usually the kids are in the car when they pull up and, and you're giving them meals, so you can see right away who it's impacting. And I would encourage those who feel safe enough to, to be able to do this, to, to find time to volunteer, or if you can't, to give money to that ICAN fund so that we can, we can support and help so many in our communities, so.
And I just add, oh, sorry, I just wanted to say for folks that if there's, if they want to volunteer for this effort and the spots are all full, I want to make sure that folks can also go and sign up to be a volunteer for Just Food as well. There's just as much need there. Home deliveries are picking up, and we provided a lunch to someone today at Liberty Memorial that had just come from, from getting their food distribution for the week from Just Food, and they indicated that there were at least 150 cars lined up, which in a lot, to be fair, you know, that is, that's, that's how they're organizing it, to promote the social distancing and the order that they have. But the need is real, the supports that are needed through volunteers, there's lots of opportunities between Just Food and the school feeding program.
Thanks for all your work on that, we appreciate it.
Thanks, Jill.
And commissioners, I guess the only thing I'd, I'd say before you make a motion on this, because we don't have any specific dollars coming to us at this point in time that I'm aware of that will, that I can easily access to support projects like this, I, my intent is to bring them back to you as a commission and put them on your agenda as rapidly as I can. It may mean that I'm updating the agenda, you know, the day before, like we did with this item, to make sure that it was on there. The city has a little bit more flexibility because of their CDBG program and the knowledge that those funds are coming in regardless of reimbursement. So I just, I know there might be some questions as to why we may have some things on our agenda that perhaps they're able to handle administratively at the city. And I appreciate your flexibility for us, but I want to be fully transparent as to what the county is potentially committing itself to if federal funds don't come through.
Sarah, do you, do you expect any similar asks from other outlying communities? from other outlying communities? I think Lawrence is sort of unique in that it's stop food service. Do you expect anything like this from Udora or Baldwin? Do you have any idea on that?
No, I'm on a call every week with all the school districts and the universities, and that's always our first question is how's feeding going? I would say that if any of those districts get in a position where they have a staff member who is, becomes ill, they will likely want to discontinue feeding. And in that case, then we will look to Jill and the team at, you know, on that feeding group to figure out how we can try to provide some additional assistance in that community. Many of them have, I mean, everybody's kind of doing stuff a little bit differently. I know Udora and Baldwin are kind of down to two days a week. I think LaCompton is doing some deliveries as requested. So I think it will kind of depend on each particular community and what would happen in those situations. But, but we, I do think there is potential that another district might not be able to continue for a period of time.
Commissioner Kelly, I'll just share that one of the things that we're also trying to do with that, that community feeding group is make sure that we're keeping, that we're getting that group together. They decide a meeting every other week on a Zoom call, which is like forty-five people at this point. And it's countywide. I should just keep updating on where all the organizations are at in terms of distributions. So I maintain that and I update everybody in our work group and our ESF six group and the Unified Command for that matter as well in my updates. But one really great recent development was Susan Farley with the K-State Extension Council reached out and offered to, they'd been compiling the list of, I think, a more comprehensive list of community-wide, county-wide feeding food opportunities. And they're working to get that updated. And then they're going to share it with Carrie Britt so we can have it added on and featured on the coronavirus hub website. So we're trying to make sure that we have as many opportunities for folks to get food on that hub website as possible. And just the extension stepping up this week is a great, a great supportive source of assistance for us. I want to make sure I recognize that. So if schools do, if one of those schools does end up having to go, cease their services at one point, like Sarah said, I hope that we'll hear about it in one, either this is the call that Sarah has, the call, the calls that I'm having, because I do have representatives from those districts on the calls that I host as well. But I hope that we're also providing all the backup resources that are available to community members as well through that comprehensive list.
Great. Thank you, Jill. It's really great to hear that you're getting that communication. So if needs do come up, we can, we can understand those needs and work together across the community to try to address. Really appreciate that. Well, I'll go ahead and, another question. Go ahead.
Well, just, just a real quick one, kind of tangential. Jill, can you, and Sarah, because Just Food is carrying so much of the load right now for feeding, you know, the distribution of the two weeks of food for lots and lots of new families, do you have a sense of how Just Food is doing? Are they keeping afloat pretty well at this point? Are they, do you sense a struggle there? Do you, what are you hearing?
I think, I mean, I, I try to check in with her very frequently. I mean, Liz Keever and I are texting now, so we're, we're in regular contact. And I know Sarah's chatted with her too. But she, she says she's good. And what I've asked her is just as soon as she starts to feel even a little bit uncertain about anything, please let me know. And the one thing she did mention is, you know, she thought they might get at some point low on face masks. So I kind of preempt, preemptively a couple of weeks ago, put in a resource request through our logistics group to get those to her so she's, doesn't have to wait for anything. But yeah, she's, as far as I know, she's, she's just a soldier. She's doing good, but we keep checking with her.
Well, yeah, always, but especially now. So thank you so much for, for making that clear to Liz because I think what we don't want is for, for there to be, well, for things to get desperate or for her to really have to struggle because there's so much other stuff to, to worry about. So I appreciate your keeping in close touch with Liz and the Just Food organization.
Any other comments or motions or questions? Do we have any public on this item?
There's no public.
No. Jill, I don't think is seeing any response there. Okay. So I'm going to make a motion to request, let's see, let me redo this. I'm going to make a motion to provide advanced funding to the Lawrence Education Foundation to support the school age feeding funding program with Lawrence Restaurants in the amount of forty-three thousand five hundred dollars, which is a fifty-fifty shared agreement with the City of Lawrence of the eighty-seven thousand shortfall to resume meal service beginning Wednesday, April fifteenth, and continuing through May first, two thousand twenty.
Second?
Moved and seconded. Hold those in favor. Say aye.
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 Thank you, Jill. Great work. I don't think we have any appointments today, Commissioners, do you? No? At this time, we take a general quick comment. I see we have three attendees. Is there any general public comment? Or Sarah, anybody there at the courthouse?
I don't have anyone at the courthouse.
No, I don't either.
Okay, thank you. Again, I'm disappointed. Moving on, Commissioner and Administrator miscellaneous. And as is tradition, we'll start with Sarah.
Thank you, Commissioners. I don't have a lot to report today. I would note that we, many of you probably saw that the governor has extended the stay-at-home order through May third. We have, we were anticipating that that notice would be coming here pretty soon. From what I understand, she will continue to evaluate the need for the stay-at-home order based off sort of like two-week increments. So I think as we approach closer towards the end of the month, you know, I think they will look to how long we extend this. You know, that being said, you know, I think that's the question on everyone's lips is how long are we in this? And, and we're all just waiting and continuing to do what we need to do to continue to flatten the curve. I was real excited to, I think you all saw that yesterday that Carrie Britt shared on our social media that, this was prepared by the University of Kansas Institute for Public Policy and Business Research. At least that's the name I used to know them by. I think they have shortened it since then. But they prepared showing the five most populous counties in Kansas and how they're doing at managing their curve of cases, of COVID cases since they started having them. And it's incredibly exciting and heartwarming to see how Douglas County has been able to keep a very flat curve in this situation and is really, we are doing what we need to be doing. The sacrifices are paying off. Our rate of spread is, is slowing and we're really doing a great job as a community. Unified Command continues to meet every other day to review issues and updates from all of our community partners in this process. I would say that we had a lot of conversation this week about enforcement. We pulled together a team, including our district attorney, Charles Branson, Sheriff, Sheriff Ken McGovern and his team, City of Lawrence, including Chief Burns, and a number, the Health Department as well, as well as a number of attorneys to prepare the press release that went out yesterday related to enforcement of the order. There, we do have measures in place to, if folks do not voluntarily comply, to, to enforce the compliance of the order. It is a Class A misdemeanor and carries with it a pretty significant fine and potential for jail time. So I really want to thank that team for working closely together to prepare something that's easy for officers to use and prepare for. And we had, we had additional conversations about religious gatherings. And, you know, I know, I think, you know, we all kind of wait and see how some things go in terms of what the governor's office says in terms of certain comments. But the way we have viewed it now, I think, is that some outdoor services can be allowed if they follow certain social distancing guidelines. Those are outlined in various governor's orders. So there's communication as to how that can happen. And we've been working closely with members of our community that have asked those questions. And I just stand for any questions the Commissioners might have on enforcement or other efforts we're doing related to COVID nineteen.
I don't have any questions. Thanks for the update, Sarah. Out of curiosity, what's the status of the masks that were ordered last week?
I don't have them yet, but I'm really hoping they get here soon. So I, yeah, I haven't gotten them yet. I, I think we anticipated probably towards the end of the week. But I did want to note that all of our, all of our essential employees that are working with the public at the jail and at juvenile detention have access to masks, and they have those right now. This would be just an additional cloth mask for folks to have, for all employees to have access to, as well as our volunteer first responders in the unincorporated area.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. I would just share with Commissioners, each Friday, I sit in on a phone call for county commissioners. They've asked for one from each county. And I give Sarah sort of an update, but I think it's important also to sort of share it with the public, some of the things we're hearing. They're working really hard to get PPE to us. I mean, it's even so much the state is working hard to engage manufacturing plants here in Kansas to see if they can retool to provide some of those, that equipment for us. They're trying to get orders in. I think what I heard last night was that they've ordered fourteen million sets of gloves and they've received one million. I mean, it's just really hard to come by this. But I feel like they really were making assurances that they're trying their best to get this things to us. They've activated the National Guard to deliver it to us. The Corps of Army and the Corps of Engineers is really working hard to talk about field hospitals and things like this. I think the one pinch point that I really hear is responding, the Department of Labor responding to the number of unemployment requests. And I really want to just encourage the public to hang in there. That website, I think, has been crashing, but I heard today it was going better. Clearly, the Department of Labor and the Department of Commerce are aware of the challenges that are happening and are doing everything they can to respond to that. And I just really appreciate our governor's leadership. I, you know, she steps in on those calls and really is, is, is providing a confident and thoughtful approach to all of this. And sometimes these are very, very tough decisions she has to make. And, and she understands the role that we have counties play in enforcing some of those orders that she puts forward. So Sarah, thanks for working with our enforcement groups to, to get those details out to the public. Any other comments from Commissioners? I will share just one. And I think, Sarah, yes, it is great that we're seeing that curve flatten. We've got to keep working at it. You know, we would be remiss if we didn't thank our healthcare providers. And thank you, Commissioner DeRusso, for all the support that you're doing out there to thank them. That's, you know, the signs we see all over town. Folks, thank Commissioner DeRusso. She's been working hard getting all those delivered. You know, our first responders and, and, you know, our school teachers, so many people are working hard across the community right now. It is so encouraging. Our restaurants, our grocery store clerks, so many people. But let's not forget our government. Both city, county, our school district folks are really working hard and working together. And, and thank you to Sarah, thank you to Jill. Sarah, your entire team has really stepped up here. And, and we, you say we're proud of Douglas County. We're proud of Douglas County government. And we're proud of our, our citizens for doing what needs to be done. And it's hard to do. I mean, it's really hard to do. So I just want to say thank you to Sarah and your whole team for all the hard work you're putting in to our community for all the work they're doing.
I appreciate that, Commissioners. And I, I do think that our whole team is learning and doing different things and rising to this challenge. And we really appreciate the support of the Commission and our community partners in this space.
Okay, any other items, Commissioners?
Good to see you guys.
It is good. Just getting together on a regular basis. This is not the same, for sure.
Nah. It's, it's strange to see Sarah sitting there in the commission room.
It's pretty quiet here these days.
I wish I had enough time to like paint a backdrop behind us, you know, so we could. Just working on that, what looks like the commission room. Well, hang in there, everybody. Take care of your families. Take care of yourself, for sure.
Thanks, everybody. Keep up the good work. Thank you much.
We are adjourned.
Bye-bye.